Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yesterday, honour, that is, honour. Yet they finishing on, I know Senegi, face bonds, honour. Honorable members of the Resources and Development Committee. Good to hear your voice, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I'm glad to see Honorable Daniels is on the call with us. Honorable Stuart will join us shortly. It is now nine oh nine AM. Last day on which in last day has been baby got was to get she Rick Mersin here. But all RDC chair. I don't care, con staff, minerals department, director. Chairman, my adult staff, I can't, I'm not calling here for the funny. Hello, hello, Mr. Tahieh. Thank you for setting all this equipment up for us that our colleagues are able to call in today. So with that, Mr. Tahieh, could you do the roll call, please?
Chairman members of RDC, this is roll call for Resource and Development Committee. Work session with Navajo Nation Land Department for Tuesday, June twenty first, two thousand twenty two. Roll call, Honorable Ricky Nas.
Delegate Rick Nas is present.
Honorable Ricky Nas is present. Honorable Thomas Walker, Junior.
I'm present, thank you.
Honorable Thomas Walker, Junior is present. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay, Junior. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
Present.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels is present. Honorable Mark A. Freeland.
Good morning, I'm present.
Honorable Mark A. Freeland is present. Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Junior. Here you have four members bill, but you don't need a quorum for this leadership meeting. Work session back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahieh. I don't care, Honorable Freeland for being on the call with us this morning. Know you're rather busy. I hope things get straightened out over there at your chapter that's having an emergency. I say invocation, hello. President, they had all the key, um, Shenanah. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, and had so little than yash, honour.
Chairman, all committee members and staff and, um, meeting participants. I had a name of who she, no, that's just a what did he say? Uh, though she could deliver them that he can make though, and he told us a little. The whole lot, uh, so that did he think that what are those John? But echo, um, yeah. Uh, who's all the link? So, and my door, yes, it's it's me, try, co. I don't that he, yeah, oh, dig in the neck. It's a, a coin, he said, so there's a bit need to make a little, co. They have no law, go. He go, he no law, Joe, no. What are they, Ben, he'll come, they, co. I don't call it a, you're buying, so, you're that, eh, de, eh, de, Ben, yeah. So, the hard to zone, co. Now, now, it's, and oh, the she, he did, ah, he, the whole lot. I don't have to shoot, oh, la, la, it's, and oh, by here, it's, and he, the whole lot, Joe, eh. Yeah, so, so, he is, um, so, echo. It's a quiet, eh, what are, eh, it's a case of it, echo. I see, who it's, who it needs, um, uh, so, there's a, and I, and the door, they, like, what? Co, it's a hot, eh, la, le. And I didn't, eh, or that, uh, he, he, they, co. I don't, uh, eh, he came, that, eh, oh, the, huh, man, see, he's, uh, la, and so, they go. I don't know, na, I'm sure, though. Panda, I'm sure, and they, and she, gee. So, he, 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 none, he, he, he came, that, eh, co. What are the, man, see, he's, though, and he, he, they. But echo, I don't, huh, um, but it's, you know, he, 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 to, uh, what, eh, to. He, the, the hand, I'm sure, but he, 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 he. I don't, eh, do, that he, no, Joe, what, I don't, eh, um, he, they, 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 no, co, eh. Now, I'm sure, and they, eh, begin, I will, gee, Joe, did she, who, eh, who, that, he, cry. Uh, what's, was, and, who, eh, the, that's, he, need, oh, they, co. He, he, dig in the, no, no, he, he. But echo, I don't, oh, it, uh, be, when it, eh, the. It, eh, the, eh, but, eh, don't, uh, I don't let, I, but, oh, and then it, like, eh, 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 it. But, eh, and the, called, eh, to, but, eh, it's, and oh, co. Now, I'm sure, eh, uh, which, I don't, called, eh, um. I, that's, he, he, like, he's, can, not, I, he's, can, not, oh, he's, there. Oh, co, eh, yeah, but, eh, 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 he, 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 though, co, and he, 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 he.
Nidhiyehwalchon dehna haloh shohdahhot ehge. Eh eh tanjido eh da benashni doh lel tijekoh. Ado khont eh ta ngenant ah oh daalcho. Oh tenneb keyah khae oh eh eh benel neh nilaekoh. Benash shudel negi oh. Chahon da hazdisa allah daahhot eh. Allah daahon neh lekoh. Ado nji tenne nji chenle negi eh doh eh eh daat daalcho. Chon holtcha eh laaj doh nahin lelo laaj ba. Ba hitzit doh leesan nehashtwi. Elke chke weh eh da ehge tenne nihahalke ehge sunnehahalke ehge. Ado khon toh bakhage shla jenle negi ndehon. Chla chla eh gohun naqad ilneh jenle eh naholchha doh lekoh khon. Oh di 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 nigen naan iltaht doh lel. What eh goh ba ban si kyesnilekohun. Ah daat sozzen behassid doh lel naalneh shuda. Eh eh zeelinda danle ba olcha ah selaod akot eh miltses. Danlehun ah doh yujehun. Da eh neh shikoh nige selahtso od ohun. Niyahhla ohkohun ba jinig ba. Eh lego ban si kyesnile sozzen hon. Ban naad doh lel tijek. What eh gohun eh doh eh niyolcha doh lel koh. Eh digen tenne eh nahlenigi ngenle naan eh khat doh lel tijek. Shini eh goh daalcho hon holtcha eh chohhod ah eh. Naan eh iltaht doh lel koh naqajin ohba goh. Naqahahhliangon nji chennoh eh goh. Naqanochcheh goh chohhod ah eh. So deszen doh lel koh tijek eh benegi bigi eh. Ah what eh doh lel khont khod ah sozzen benesh ah kohun. Ah kohhod ah sozzen eh niyilak eh da doh lel koh. Tijek naan ah kohhuzon doh lel chohhod ah eh. Saske soodeshneh koh sozzen. Nahandoh la doh lel koh bichahun. Niyijeh naahuzon doh lel koh huzon nahaskli doh lel. Huzon nahaskli, huzon nahaskli, huzon nahaskli. Thank you, uh Chairman.
Eh kehha shenan ta honorable Vice Chair Walker. Thena gana hatshadans ando pinnacheshi koroh. Nikin sekheh sto nihje bigi koroh sozzen holongo. Eh chlanitlin doh lel. Ah kehha naan khod ah tenne goh sozzen eh haatziko. Benachin kuchhod edo eh yehdoh benachin. Koroya eh goh sheh. Eh khat doh lel. Eh kehha shenan ta. Eh sheh koronos naana. Um introductions but before we go to introductions Mister Tahai do you have any announcements for us?
The chair members of RDC there is proposed. Special session that is a petition is going on right now. The proposed special session is for this coming Thursday and Friday. At the moment there is three signatures on this petition. If the thirteen signatures are not collected before nine AM tomorrow. This petition, the special NMC session, session will not occur. We have a regular RDC meeting tomorrow at night at ten o'clock. We have to keep our meeting short because there's also a Navi meeting at one o'clock. On Thursday you also have a regular Navi meeting and on Friday if the special meeting session is not completed with the required signatures. We will have our leadership meeting with land department, general land development department and Yavapai county to discuss. And toward the seven acres that are being proposed for sale out at Salibwood, Arizona. Turn back my announcement.
Thank you Mister Tahai. Keheh nahhanan leshigi doh nihkaan nanloh di. Eh sheh koronos naan adol eh introductions agenda korobikahahhui plasagi. Eh sheh shenan ta naflenigi nkehte introduction bein kahahrologis. RDC honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, uh thank you Chairman, committee members, staff. And listening audience, meeting participants. Uh Dee Thomas Walker Junior eh tishna. Ado um eh chadi thoh. Ado thwana halin. Na na ah hasan doh thoh. Ado chako hasan eh what eh goh. Phasen yeh khat dahistu. Eh kwaya tenne khat nigi chuh eh. Ah eh um da shul ah doh banash ah koh. Dada eh hundred and ten chapters eh. Ba ba bande leh shikoh ba eh hinshen eh eh koth ehge. Ado uh the way western agencies jo ah chahhui. For my my district eh the way uh southwest koh. Ado that it was uh southwest corner of the Navajo Nation. Eh eh koth eh goh um. Ado um ado nenshen negi eh ya ashin hinshen. Eh patrol eh what did eh eh shijeh da eh. What soh neh hul yege eh da shcheh. Sadishgi shneh eh da shenaleh. What eh goh doh kehha doh Vice Chairman of the Resource Development Committee. Eh what ah doh eh naan esh eh prashin. Tijek koh kehha shenan ta. Ado uh shing janoh lati kley koh naana. What eh la back to you Chair, thank you.
Atkoshila kehha shenan ta honorable Vice Chair Walker, honorable Daniels.
Good for Chair uh kehha kodo. Ado naan kodo shcheh. Not ah. Kodo dun kodo naqabi hinshni kodo. Eh sheh kodo da denes doh lel tijek kodo. Ado kodo shudet shikodo Herman Daniels Junior. Eh eh uh shijeh. Ado nenshen negi eh prashni. Ado da shijeh ge eh chucheni. Chuchegeh thoh kehha leli naqay tenne eh. Nida shucheh. Ado da shenaleh ge iskahad doh. Adai tenne nenshen nohtai kenkeh di neh doh lel tijeh beni bigi eh. Ado kodo banash nesigi. Eh ya naad faan. Oh zeh thoh sa thoh doh va biken. Oh lae banash nesar doh naan kodo eh lihki eh azeh. Eh kahahat da goh reberbehela what's the days and secrets kodo. So but uh doh da eh. Eh sheh deh eh sheh deh one one date nesho one hundred and ten chapters. What eh goh um Mister Chair, thank you.
Keheh honorable Daniels, honorable Freeland.
Chairman, good morning, can you hear me?
Oh yate tenne.
Oh yate shanta colleague uh staff, good morning. Um I apologize for um getting on late and not being there in person. Um I'm up here on uh just north of Paragon Ranch off of Highway three seventy-one in beside Badlands. Um I have a a water emergency or or a situation up here at Herfino I'm headed to. But um anyway um shanta eh sheh mark freedom neshiado. Ado doh senegi thotsoni shonokia ahni bashishchien. Senjakina shichela turn up as a shenaleh. These toxicities in the shy rivers and eight chapters out here in eastern Navajo. I have cramp with dona hadiski soh kehha eh. Ado Bessenti um Lake Valley, Herfino, uh White Rock and Naiyazeh. Uh good morning to one and all. Ado shanta thank you uh for the prayer this morning. Chucheh uh eh eh yeh shanta thank you Chairman.
Keheh honorable Freeland. Oh kehha tennebanan nesigi ahja. Honorable Stewart.
Good morning shana Chairman, others as a Vice Chair. Others shana katoh kodo yeh fana fani gela this morning. Arunda de staff fani genda shujah kon hasodinzen. So eh eh na bigi konsoh yah eh kon. Neshi yah eh shenheh nihnaan eh kaydo yah eh kon beni iro leh tijek kon. Minerals department uh arunda kodo eh ya uh nihfana fani gi online. Oh yah eh ono fosh eh ya Wilson C Stewart Junior eh inchya doh thotsoni eh inchlen naan esh edes kachini bashishchien. Kachin shucheh doh bigi fani da shenaleh. Aru tawatah deh naasha aru bakhadashagi eh tawatah bekelchi. Khon sizo nijid. Khod ah kehha team with underlegi from District eighteen the for defense agency. Eh bakhadashan the for defense agencies are presenting and for the resource development committee twenty one thousand.
Keheh Satsila. Ado Satsila honorable Kia Allen Gay Jr, are you on the call? Eh yah recognized hinshyeh wathlaninshla oh zeh kachini bashishchien. Sena habethni da shucheh doh kiya ahni eh da shenaleh. What oh eh de nenshlin doh hasthanggo. Chapters banash nesigi eh yah hatse da. On San Juan eh tsasat naan itlenahholya deh nejeh neh nahna zaad eh ahholya. Doh ulkay eh upper frulet east totakari burnum. East nesgi eh yah nuh koma hollya. Ado one hundred and ten chapters sheh egith ahni ilsho bonde leh nesho kehha shenan ta. Koron hilkhonohtanegi. Ado kashisda wathalogis Mister Tahai.
Morning Chairmembers of RDC. Those present those online my name is Rodney Tahai I'm the legislative advisor for Resource and Development Committee. I'm Kiany and Senjakina and I'm originally from Arizona. Back to you Chair.
Mcuh Mister Tahai Ms Chi.
Hello, good morning everyone. My name is Karen Chi. I work with um Office of Legislative Services. I am the legislative reporter for RDC. My clans are touchitni shloh my diskiji bashishchien. Kamai da shucheh twidijeh da shenaleh.
Thank you Ms Chi, Ms Khan.
Good morning yah eh Resources and Development Committee members. Dona senegi ado yah eh to minerals department and all the staff that will be presenting today, thank you very much. Sheh Mariana Khan da shijenleh. Dona enes senegi eh thoyeh tjeni neshla. But ahni bashishchien. Laascheh da shucheh senjakina da shenaleh. Kodo sahdeh naasha. Oh eh kehha intago sheyaj nahassodinzen. Eh ba eh kehha nene, thank you very much always. Good morning one and all, I will be listening to the call Mister Chair, thank you.
Eh kehha Ms Khan. Oh nihkaan nanloh di konsoh beh danaholid ahin kahadall eh goh. Bah kehha nitsen. Eh sheh koroh minerals department deh. Laaj benashis inegishin koroh but it out alto ah kehha nihje eh da da wathalogis. Ms Rowena Charamaya.
Good morning honorable Chairman Nez, honorable RDC members and everyone on the call this morning. My name is Rowena Charamaya. I'm Senjakina born for Laguna in Spanish. I am the Director of Minerals Department.
Yate Benes honorable Chairman Nez and RDC committee members who are here with us today and online listening. Uh my name is Levina Rajan. I am the Environmental Engineer with the Surface Mining Program. Uh twidijeh niinchleh sena habethni bashishchien. Saada denes da shucheh naqay denes da shenaleh.
Good morning honorable Chairman Nez and honorable member of RDC. And uh everyone who is on this call. My name is Krishna Vasco da and I'm Senior Mining Engineer with the program. Thank you.
Good morning honorable Chairman Nez, honorable delegates and guests on the phone. I am Levina Bessenti, the Reclamation Specialist for the Surface Mining Program.
Uh yate Benes uh honorable Chairman Nez and honorable RDC delegates as well as the guests on the phone. Uh sheh Travis Begay uh Yeneshia Tavani shleh. Eh sheh bashishchien oh toreshitni da shucheh. Koster da shenaleh. I'm the Lead Reclamation Specialist for the uh Surface Mining Program.
Yate Benes honorable Chair uh. Um all of you all on the online.
Morning everybody um. Uh my name is Harrison Billy I am the uh program manager for the uh. Hey understand oh this. Um just thank everybody um honorable. Long time coming we really. To these the work session. I have a big heart knows about getting us all together doing this. Glad it's happening.
So much to learn and I appreciate your department here Mister Charamaya to share this information with us. I never knew what primacy was until a few years ago when I met uh Harrison and Mister Skeet there so. So much to learn in our government, thank you naana.
Yate Benes eh Williams Skeet neshiado. Honorable Mr. Kya ahne eh ya. Ah Yezha arunda. Shinida shucheh. Oh shenaleh eh ya senachini damze. Keheh naan kwaya Satsila. Honorable Nez. Ah kwaya naan follow up from April first. Aru na Satsila Mr. Stewart. Doh areta isenoxai ono delegates doh. Ne ta isenoxai gi kehha lah doh. Yate kon shucheh. Nhatsoh rozden doh. Senachet naalhoh. Inaviken eh di taro leh soh yate oh. Ah nejeh kehha.
Eh kehha. Ado koroh sto uh from the Office of the President Vice President Ms Claschen.
Good morning yate Benes Chair Speaker Claschen. From the Office of the President.
Thank you Ms Claschen for being here representing the President and the Vice President. Mister Philford, are you on the call?
Oh yate Chair and members of Resource Development Committee staff and everybody that's listening in. All the presenters and uh my colleague from OPVP. Naregoch adesham shnoh one week to shut eh under. Put your phone away just noh doh di zahda. Ah isus ah di yaha. Supposed to be on leave this week. But uh good morning. Ado nahtshodinzen. Zadaalcho nahna nisneh bein nahtshodinzen lege eh kehha shenah. Ado shidid Davis Oxford Office of the President Vice President. Like the staff assistant kili chineh shneh doh tlaschhi bashishchien. Ahni da shucheh twidijeh da shenaleh. Eh koth eh goh I'll be listening in. Own George ahja. Have a good day.
Atkoshila yeah Mister Philford. Eh kehha we all work twenty-four seven for the government so. We wish we could take time off. Thank you. Bela Department of Justice, are you on the call? Then anybody that wishes to introduce themselves, you're welcome to do so. Attenya hakwoshila kehha. Eh sheh number two guna eh kwaya naalsoh nihdahos soh eh goh hui plas agenda bein negi. Purpose of the work session benigela neh lenegi eh yah kodo. Resources and Development Committee. Will be conducting a work session with the Navajo Nation Department of Minerals to continue discussion. Issues related to the department's primacy initiative for Surface Mining Program. Eh sheh koroh shlanit lenegi what eh goh kethnaan nishholyegehki. Eh benachin kodo. Di deh mining han nenegi primacy olgego ah eh delegation ham. Soh sheh ohhlin lenegi sheh koroh. Ban selaad doh leh legi Satsila koroh soh beh danaholid ah sheh bahadall nekoh. Ahje bela itletoh lel doh tijek sheh koroh beh hilhui legi. Ham soh sheh bikinadet eh tchintoh nospet ilneh beniga. Eh sheh koroh number three guna eh presentation doh discussion. Bayiltkeh doh bein hilkonin legi sheh koroh um director inleh minerals department doh. Rowena Charamaya sheh. Ado ndeta Harrison Billy doh. Bill Skeet doh. Levina Rajon and Levina Bessenti. Aru doh hotai yeh. Uh Charamaya you have the floor so kehha.
Thank you Chairman Nez. Uh before we go into our presentation I want to just give a little background on what our presentation is all about. In our work session that we had with RDC during our April meeting. Chairman Nez had asked that we provide a little bit more information on the staff credentials and the responsibilities of the teams. So the presentation is going to focus on the two teams that the Surface Mining Program is made up of. The first team is the inspection team and the second team is the permitting team. When the presentation is given describing the responsibilities and duties of the employees. I want everyone to remember that wherever, whenever OSMRE is named after primacy. OSMRE is not going to be involved. That is the function that the Surface Mining Program will take over. So with that I will hand it over to Levina Bessenti and she'll begin the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning.
Atkoshila uh Ms Bessenti you have the floor.
Good morning, I would like to start the first slide, the agenda. The main point of our agenda is to discuss key components of our department. This includes an overview of the staff, who they are, our background, our roles, our responsibilities. And additional roles that we take on beyond the inspection and permit program. Lastly, we will give a brief overview of how having primacy will affect our department. Our department currently has eleven funded positions. There is four reclamation specialists with only three positions filled at this moment. We have two environmental engineers, two mining engineers, a hydrologist, a programming analyst and an office specialist. I will introduce Travis T. Begay. He's our lead reclamation specialist and our team lead for the Navajo Penobishin Mine. He has a BS in geology, a bachelor's of art and history. He has been trained in surface coal mine blasting as well as having one-on-one training with Alfreda Cornsville. Who is OSM's blasting expert. Alfreda Cornsville was a former employee with the Surface Mining Program and has been with OSMRE. Our next reclamation specialist is Gilbert Bessenti. He is degree in range science and has thirty years experience as a rangeland and natural resource specialist. He has extensive knowledge in soils and revegetation. When I say revegetation it's used to describe process of providing vegetation on barren or diluted land. And next slide. That is me, I am Levina Bessenti. I have a BS in earth science at UNM, a BA in pre-law and political science at UNM, University of Mexico. I have worked previously as a petroleum geologist for Navajo Nation Owen Gass. A law clerk for the President's and Vice President's Office. And a mineral geologist for the minerals department before becoming an inspector for the Surface Mining Program. On the permitting side of the Surface Mining Program we have five current employees. Our program manager Harrison Billy has a bachelor's of business administration and finance and accounting from the University of Phoenix. And a bachelor's of science in mining engineering from the University of Arizona. He has more than twenty-eight years' experience of private mining industry and international work experience. He has also worked with local and regional mines. Krishna Vasco da is our senior mining engineer. He has a professional engineering license. He has a master's of engineering and mining from the University of Arizona. And a bachelor's of engineering and mining which he obtained from the Indian Institute of Engineering Science in Calcutta, India. He has thirty-four years of surface and underground mining experience. William Skeet is our senior environmental engineer. He has a bachelor's of science in agricultural engineering from New Mexico State University. He has forty years' experience with federal and state agencies working with permitting and bond release. As well as expertise in other areas involving mining. Levina Rajan is our environmental engineer and she has a bachelor's of science in mining engineering. Our mineral engineering from Mexico Tech. She has gained mining experience while working at Chevron McKinley Mine and applies her knowledge to the Surface Mining Program. He not only has reclamation experience but she has worked with hydraulic design and land relinquishment as well as many other areas. Patricia Slim is our principal hydrologist. She has a bachelor's of science in geology from UNM. She has done hydro- hydrologic work with various entities on and off the reservation. As well as operating her own hydrogeology consulting firm. Carol Belling. Belling T. Our senior program analyst. She has a BS in business administration with an emphasis in computer science. From Northern Arizona, Arizona University. She had spent twenty years with the Navajo Nation Division of Social Service before joining the Surface Mining Program staff. And has brought her extensive IT knowledge to our program. And with that, Mr. Travis Begay will now present inspections.
Okay. Thank you uh Levina uh good morning uh. Uh thank you again uh honorable uh Chairman Nez. I will give a uh brief overview of the uh on the inspection uh team for our program. Currently we are three inspectors and we are essentially the the eyes and ears of the permitting staff as well as the for the minerals program. Um there are there are inspections that have to be conducted on the uh surface uh surface coal mines on a quarterly basis. We assist there we assist with uh complete, partial, partial inspections. Uh complete inspection is conducted uh once uh per quarter. These generally last about three days in length. While there we we have an overview basically of everything of all the mining operations that go on. Whether it's from the the coal mining to extraction to them hauling to the power plant. We also look at their their reclamation activities and see and making sure that the the mines are in compliance. Um with um with the thirty uh CFR regulations as well as their own permit requirements. Uh when we're out on the site we do um listen in to um updates from the mine personnel. These um these updates could be everything from from their mining operations to from their updated reclamation plans. What are they, what watersheds are they going to be uh uh reworking? And also to their uh community um involvement or outreach programs that they have. Uh an example of which would be is Navajo Mine this past uh winter they had a a um. Full um um full uh 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 heating program that they were distributing out to the uh to the to the um Navajo Nation residents. And also their education involvement too that they um that they may undertake such as like uh giving tours to um schools. Out um basically showing them their mine operations. Um we also look at um um during the complete inspections we usually look at a quarterly reports such as their their blasting. Um operations make sure that they are in compliance. Uh we also look at a pound uh um upon inspection surveys and um inspection reports that they conduct. Also look at air quality and um hydrology monitoring reports as well. On an annual basis we sometimes will we will also look at their pond certifications. These have to be done by their by the by. PE on the mine site. We also look at their liability insurance. These have to be updated on a yearly basis and we also look at their last um public notice that they have to distribute to the public. Especially in areas that are if any residents are near any of their um their their blasting operations. We do a um partial inspection at least twice per quarter. These generally last no more than two days and these are generally more site specific. We don't we don't tour the whole mine site. We basically just do follow-ups on things that we we may have encountered previous inspections. And probably the most important thing they usually come about in these uh partial inspections is that the OSM inspectors usually will allow us. Uh myself, Levina and Gilbert sometimes they'll they'll allow us to be the lead kind of. And basically have us decide where do we want to go visit and where do we want to inspect on the mine site. And lastly on that is the uh what we call bond release inspections. Each each mine has a bond that they put up for reclamation purposes. And um there's a there's a amount that goes, there is a amount that is tied with these um uh reclamation bonds so. So as they're reclaiming the land, these are broken down into several phases. We usually call them Phase One, Two, and Three. And each one has their own different criteria. So assist with their inspections out there for Phase One. They usually have, they have to backfill the pit, have to cover it up with spoil material, which is essentially the gray clay-like material that's underneath the topsoil. They have to reconstruct drainages and they can put down topsoil material over that. When it comes to Phase Two, we make sure that topsoil has been redistributed over that, over those graded slopes and that there isn't no major erosion features developing. And they also have to seed and mulch those reclaimed areas with their approved seed mix of lavender permit. When it comes to the Phase Three, which is the final one, which occurs about ten years after the initial seeding, we make sure that everything is good to go from the reestablished vegetation, make sure that it's perennial vegetation and that it is not overrun with weeds or annuals. They have to submit vegetation studies for consecutive years. If there's gonna be any ponds that are gonna be left in place, they have to make sure those have adequate, that they do pass water quality standards, which have been set by the US EPA as well as the Navajo Nation EPA. And at the conclusion of each of these inspections, we do submit inspection reports. And to further expand on that, I will divert this to Krishna Baskoda.
Thank you, Travis. First of all, I'd like to thank Honorable Chairman Ned and Honorable RDC members for giving the program this opportunity, presentation. So regarding inspection reporting, this is very important for us. So Navajo National Surface Mining Program participates in the joint mandatory inspection with OSMRE, Office of Surface Mining, Reclamation, and Enforcement, and submits the inspection report to OSMRE within ten days of the inspection. So that ten days is very important and we have to submit that at any cost. And regarding the inspection, we have one complete inspection that is conducted per quarter per mine. So the total is four per year per mine for the complete. And two partial inspections are conducted per quarter per mine. So total is eight partial per mine. So in total, there are twelve inspections. And so we are counting that every mine we are inspecting every month. So there is inspection for every mine for every month. And in addition to the joint mandatory inspection, we have, like, we participate in public outreach processes with the federal agencies during the preparation of EIS, Environmental Impact Statement, and Environmental Assessment. And we submit our comments to OSMRE within thirty days of that meeting. So with this, I'm handing over to Travis again for further discussion on inspection.
Thank you, Krishna. I'll just go over real briefly the responsibilities that we have as inspectors out on the field, what we look for, what we report back to the mine operators. We do look at the vegetation throughout the reclaimed slopes. Make sure that there is established vegetation and that it is good perennial vegetation. Make sure that there's no bare or open patches anywhere. And we also have to make note of any invasive weeds that are starting to grow. Try to point those out so that the mine operator can take care of those. We also inspect topsoil stockpiles. Topsoil material is the most valuable resource that a mine company has to salvage and they have to protect. So they put those in stockpiles throughout the mine area. And to prevent any of that material from being lost, it is protected by toe burns. They have to make sure that none of the material is lost through either wind or by water. There are numerous drainage channels that are constructed throughout the mine site. We have to make sure those are all in good condition, that there's no, that the overall goal is that there's no off-permit boundary disturbance by any of the sediment material that comes in the mine area, mining operations. Topsoil material, we also look to make sure that there's no issues such as like acid from acidic soil anywhere. We'll show, there is a picture of one of these issues up there. We also make sure that there's no spoil material that is exposed through either water erosion. And then when it comes to the ponds throughout the mine site, we have to make sure that each of the ponds have established capacity, storage capacity. So they have, each of the mines has requirements on when they have to clean out their ponds if they are above a certain elevation. We also check to make sure that their inlet and spillway channels are adequate and that they are in good condition. Non-coal waste, we do encounter that throughout the mine area as well as on reclamation area. This essentially means trash and trash or any metal products or metal objects we may encounter out there. But the most uncommon one we do encounter is fence material, barbed wire fence and all that. Then like I mentioned earlier, we do a records review quarterly basis. Do stuff like their blasting operations, make sure that they're in compliance with that. And we also look at their impalement reports. These have to be conducted by the staff, the mine staff. And then there's also annual surveys that have to be submitted. And these are done by the PE's from the mine site as well as we look at their air quality and hydrology reports.
Before you go forward, Mr. Gay. Honorable members of RDC, on this presentation, this deck here, Ms. Chairman Maya, how do your staff, when you guys go out for the inspections, I see all of your professional people. Do you all go over there and work together on the inspection?
Chairman Ned, the inspectors, and we have three inspectors currently, they are the ones that do the backbone of the work first. They go out and Travis will be going into that a little bit when he explains the pictures, the upcoming slides. But the inspectors go out first, except on the bonding inspections. And then everybody goes out, the whole staff, they go out on foot and inspect the entire mine site.
Okay. I do have questions on this, but I see down a few pages acidic. So if you go through each picture then, I'll...
Yeah, I will explain that.
Riding my horse way ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ned.
We started our trail ride yesterday and I'm still in that mode. Go ahead, Travis.
Okay, next slide. These are a series of inspection, of pictures we have taken out on the mine site. As the three inspectors, we do go out on the mine site. We do inspect these areas. We travel up to them. A lot of times, we have to walk out there, out on the mine site. And we do inspections in all types of weather conditions. Whether it is near a hundred degrees outside and there's no clouds whatsoever, we do inspect the areas. We also inspect the mine sites if they've had like a major storm event, whether it's monsoon rain or if there's snow that has fallen. We still go out on the mine site. We still inspect these active areas. Okay, on the first picture you see on the left, that's from a pond cleanup. I believe that's from Kanta Mine. They are cleaning out their pond to restore capacity. On the picture to the right is from one of their sediment controls, which is the culvert that has been filled up with sediment. So the operator will generally will go in and they will clean out those culverts to restore their dirt. Okay, next. Picture on the left is from a bond release inspection. So we have one of our staff right there. They're being used as a scale. So this is a major erosion feature that has been identified on the graded, on the reclaimed slopes. So all of these will generally be passed on to the mine operator for them to address. They also have a fence repair that they have to maintain. There are fences that have been put up particularly around reclaimed areas that have vegetation that's regrowing. The idea is to try to prevent that area from being overgrazed by livestock. That has been an issue on some of the mines.
The picture on the left, where is it at?
That's from Kanta Mine.
Kanta?
Yeah. On the picture on the left, this is the OSM inspector. Her name is Alfreda Cornfield. She was mentioned earlier. She is the OSM's blasting expert. And she generally will do hands-on training or one-on-one training with the inspector. She has done it with me several times out on the field. This particular picture, she's demonstrating to me what these detonation cords are that they use to set up for blasting a pattern out on the mine site. This was over at Navajo Mine. There was a blast shot that took place not too long after that photo was taken. And the picture on the right, that's me as used as a scale. Basically shows how big erosion features are fixed. Okay, the picture on the left is from spoil grading. Like I mentioned earlier, spoil material is essentially the clay material that's underneath the topsoil. You have to regrade those slopes and they have to establish them up to their, what they call final surface configuration, which is their, how the land will be when it's ultimately released. Every once in a while, they do encounter hotspots with some of this spoil material. And these generally start from either spontaneous combustion or you may have remnants of a coal seam that may be on fire down below. These are pointed out to the operator and they are dug up and they make sure that those are extinguished before they apply topsoil material above it. Now, the photo to the right is what I had mentioned earlier, acidic soil. Now, this is generally due to, you have spoil material that has what they call acid mine material underneath it. So when that is in place and topsoil is placed on top of it, you generally will have like greasy spots on the topsoil material. There are greasy spots in place. There generally won't be any vegetation that will grow over it. So we have encountered these on several of the mines. So they are aware of these and when they do encounter it, they do mitigate it. There are several methods that they use to mitigate that material, whether it's applying rock mulch, topsoil, or underneath it on top of the spoil material. That concludes the inspection section. And I will divert the spark to Krishna.
Travis, can you go back to the last stat there?
Yeah.
On that acidic testing, the oil spot. What did you say the oil spots come from?
Um, it's basically it's from the material that's underneath. Because basically when they mine, certain, when they mine material, certain of that is when it's exposed to oxygen or moisture, it turns acidic. Generally do have to do with the compounds, the organic or the oxidation of material. Basically that what causes that to become acidic. The topsoil material is placed on top of that, that leaches up into the material. So that's why you have oily spots sometimes.
Hmm, thank you. Do you guys have any questions, comments? And go ahead.
Next slide please. And so the permit document review, this is another responsibility which Navajo Nation Surface Mining Program conducts. The permit renewal and permit revision happens throughout the life of the mine. Whenever OSMRE receives a permit revision or permit renewal application package from the mining companies, they will check if it's administratively complete. And in portion of thirty CFR 750, 12B, they are required by this regulation to make the application available for review to Navajo Nation Surface Mining Program, Navajo Nation Fish and Wildlife, Navajo Nation EPA, if it's affecting them and affected chapters. The application has to be sent to BIA and BLM too. So this is a consultation, which the federal government has to do in person to this regulation, thirty CFR 750 on 6A4. So with the transmitter of this application, this regulation is satisfied. So in short, the consultation by the federal government with the other entities is completed after the transmitter under the regulation I mentioned before. Now, after we get the application, we, the Navajo National Surface Mining Staff, review the permit application package and we have to submit that report within thirty days. And that thirty days is important. That has to be submitted within thirty days to OSMRE. What OSMRE does after that, that they compile the report, receive from the different agencies, and sends the findings to mining companies. If there are deficiencies, if we find any deficiency, the application package is referred back to the mining companies. That is done by OSMRE. All the compiling is done by OSMRE and then they send the comments to the mining companies. And if there is no deficiencies, then the application package is approved for the renewal or for the revision, whatever they asked for. Next please. So this is the picture of the permit in our library. So in average, there are twenty-two volumes of three-inch thick binders containing hundreds of pages of permits for each of the three mines we have now. So it's a huge document and let's go to show you how big is the permitting document each. So next, this has been said, I'll hand over the floor to the chairman.
I'm sorry, can you go back one more slide? I just wanted to... This permit that's shown in the picture is actually for McKinley Mine. And that's just for McKinley Mine right there. And it contains operating plans for extracting the coal and how the land will be reclaimed. So that's all contained in those binders. So each mine has one. But there's maps as well, so. Okay, so in the next two slides, I'd like to mention...
Before you, and we'll go back to that last one. So all those, was that at your office there?
Yes.
Did you guys show me?
Yeah, that's where a whole bunch of mines, yeah.
You guys showed me that before. So when a mine is done or during the mining, all the inspections take, are perpetual, right? However, way that they operate the mine, the things that they do, this inspection and everything here, the documents are just recorded. So you guys really keep an eye on all this.
Yes.
Right.
We do have a permit library and an online database. And all our inspection reports are in there for any of the inspections we've done. And then also, like I said, our permit library also has an archive from the inspectors, you know, years before us and their information is also there.
In that five-year period. So, everything changed, five years is a long time, I've just one business plan. Every once in a while, that's the- That's the whole, that's the whole five-year process.
Everything's documented, huh?
Everything.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, in the next two slides, I'd like to mention the other activities that our program participates in. So, the first one here, um, the Surface Mining Program holds a meeting between Teabody Western Coal Company and Navajo Nation President Nez, as well as Vice President Lizer and, uh, Chief of Staff. Um, and we also invited executive branch directors and managers. And we felt the people who we invited were the ones that we felt had a voice for the Navajo Nation as a whole to keep certain as- assets that will remain at the mine. So, as a result of the meeting, we created the Kianta Mine, um, Asset Work Group and seven teams were created. And of, of all these teams, one member of our Surface Mining Program employees is a member of each team. So, um, other, other Navajo Nation departments also participate such as Navajo EPA, the Water Department, NDOT, um, so, and like I had mentioned, there are seven teams and these are just to decide which power lines we would like to keep, which roads, what taller roads will, will remain, which buildings will be an asset for the Navajo Nation, um, otherwise they will be polished. The area is going to be reclaimed. So, next slide. And we've also created the Keyat Team and this team was created by the Surface Mining Program. Uh, the team does community outreach to residents within the mine lease area. Um, we've interacted with residents and we found there's a lot of misinformation, so the team was created to provide correct information to residents and ask, answer any questions and concerns. Um, and then we've also been participating in the Blat Mesa Review Board, their quarterly meeting. Uh, this is a group that was created by the council. And we noticed there was also a disconnect between the board, community members and the Navajo Nation. So, that is the program we have also been participating in to share information. And I will refer to Lavina to update on what we do with the STEM.
Okay, be- before we move on here, Ms. Chairman Maya, um, RDC is gonna have a tour and a meeting up in Blat Mesa. And we would like to also invite your office, your team, your experts, whoever wants to come and meet with the community members and the leadership, the chapter leadership there. And Honorable Yella here will be there, uh, with that place.
Great, thank you, thank you for that invitation. That is definitely something that, um, we'd be looking forward to, that we, we want to be engaged as much as possible with the community, with the teams that are already in place and of course with the legislative and executive branch. We feel that we've had for so many years this information, but no outlet. And so, now we're finally, um, able to share information, people, different departments and different branches, um, communities, chapters are now willing to listen to the information we have and I, it's, the reason for that is not because they didn't wanna listen before, it's just because of, with the mine closures, now it has everybody's attention. If the mine is closing, reclamation is going on, although reclamation has been going on all this time. Um, but now it's, people are listening because it, because they're not producing coal anymore. So, thank you for that invitation.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman Maya, uh, Mr. Tahi. I had just mentioned to Ms. Chairman Maya here that we would like to invite her team, whoever wants to come to the Blat Mesa Mine Tour with RDC and provide some input while we're there. Just, um, extend that invitation to Minerals Department, thank you. Uh, you may proceed.
Okay. Our department has worked with ACES to talk about the STEM program and how our department has jobs in the STEM field. So, we, we, with ACES, they have STEM events and we often participate with the high school STEM events. So, we do Zoom, Zoom meetings, we discuss what we do, what our department does scientifically, how science, technology, engineering and math relate to our department. And we tell them that STEM plays a vital role in not only our department, but all throughout the Navajo Nation. Every single department might have someone in the STEM field working and we like to expand on that and discuss it with high school students so that they have a general idea of what we do on the Navajo Nation so they can maybe, it'll help them carve out a career path in the STEM field. In conclusion, I want to give a brief overview of what will happen when the Navajo Nation Surface Mining Program obtains primacy. We will have full enforcement authority, meaning that we will be able to handle our own violations, which was something that the program was not able to do, but the OSMRE inspectors can. We will also have permitting authority and we will be treated like any other state programs that have primacies such as New Mexico, Utah, Colorado. And this will expand our, the Navajo Nation sovereignty by giving us a regulate, regulatory authority over our land. Next. And then in conclusion, that is our presentation and thank you very much for your time and we're open for discussion now.
Thank you very much. We certainly do have faith in the program, Office of Surface Mining Program and team of experts that you have, Ms. Chairman Maya. And I believe Honorable Stewart is ready to have this legislation be drafted and move forward. And it's always good to hear that the Navajo Nation is taking control of their own and this is where we, you all come in and shine because you all do the work for the nation. And we trust that you all do that work and we know that by your credentials, so. Honorable Members of RDC. Honorable Stewart.
Honorable Minister, uh, Chairman, Honorable Vice Chair, Honorable Chairman and, uh, Aman and for the president. The first one, A, A, uh, with RDC, I wasn't there because of the difficulties, I did that, that, that time. I'd say that, uh, I, uh, I did meet with the staff, staff at this time to discuss the primacy legislation. Shana, auto, could all get, A, A, uh, the information I received from that plus today's, again, the refresh of course, again, A, A, are really something I, I stand strongly in support of for Navajo Nation and the Minerals Department. Move towards primacy because we need to do something like this where it's been under the umbrella of the US for, for so many years now. I think it's time Navajo Nation come out forward and move within our own boundaries to understand what we need to do and this is in that direction. Do have the staff, staff are very dedicated to what they do. They express and the, using the libraries, I thought the libraries, dedication that goes into what they're doing just to take care of our mother earth, to take care of the vegetation, to take care of that out there, those little acts of, um, involvement that they do that we do not see as delegates or other executive branch employees, but the staff here that they see. And as Travis said, you know, they go out there during all types of weather, um, cold, um, warmth, you know, if it tends, if there's a wind, doesn't matter, you know, they're out there inspecting these mines, taking care of our mother earth, like that again. So, I do, and I hope that, you know, we can as RDC members, as a whole team, uh, uh, again, um, sponsor this, all, all six of us with our names on there, Shana, to, to move it forward for this, the department, the Minerals Department with Chairman Maya's group and we can do that direction for them and with them to see this, um, happen for, for the program. I want to ex- express, Shana, thank you.
So, Keha, Shenanai, Honorable Members of RDC, any comments or questions? Ashbaha, Shenanai.
Chairman.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you Chairman, the committee members, uh, the, uh, meeting participants, all the offices, uh, departments, programs and agencies as well as the, uh, public, um, appreciate this time, Chairman. Um, also appreciate the, uh, presentation of, uh, information valuable and important and critical information. Um, I just wanna say this is not common knowledge, this isn't common information, something you hear every day. Uh, you have to look it up and read into it, you have to do some research and ask around in order to get some information. But even that's just, um, it's general information. So, the type of information we receive is, uh, and I consider is, uh, critical information, valuable information, what the, very important. I call, that being the case, um, as elected, elected leaders, elected officials and as employees, we have our work cut out for us certainly in this, in this area. Um, uh, surface mining operations, issues, plans and then post, post-mining activities that relate to that. I call it the general public, I know that, uh, council members, our colleagues, uh, will ask this question at some point, probably during the, uh, presentation of the legislation when drafted and when it's on legislative track going before committees. Uh, one of us or some of us will say, okay, let's hear the Navajo version of the presentation of, of the proposed laws. I call, as a speaker of two languages, that's, um, it's important, that's important to receive information process and with two, uh, two worldviews. that's important to receive information process and with two, uh, two worldviews. Uh, what are, what are the netanitl?
Akoh primacy hatniggi, denek etche saadigi shee. Di dik akro be on nishto lehligi surface mining program yeil nishto lehligi oholni bahnilia. Arabil be eh kro yeil nishto beniga. Akoh ani di saabe danahadit ahigi shee hadaliago. Sitsele shee kro bahadilnehagi bahadaliago shee shatoh shee ye ye yajtke do stef kroon balkahnahat khanegi denedaidit ahige shee. Do denedabesa ye da hasanige shee ye shee hadado tlatoh ko eh di dened. Ah kro da ista anla, karnde ohut anki denel la da ista angi benin. Eh bah haile yaandat eh di da. Beesh bahhasan anbet anachjak o resources and development committee be wotjiggi la ha'i. Haile saabe danahadit ahie la slayho eh hota ba hui nte danisen shee. Arawa ani denashnan ta nehiza denebesa do tiet eh go betzi be yajtke go go. Ayja shee balakana becha hatsetzeh denegue ay yeje ho won do ay deje ho won congressional and senate leaders. Akoh la na ikakho kendahalko ego Washington DC go. Di denebesa digi be becha hatsetzeh huin she ye da hoton enshle do aron ashato ya't eh bejuniho. Do tiet eh go bahlia dat eh ha shee dat lola. Arawa bejuni ta di denebesa digi kro be hasdi ke eh shatoh mikidene ndas ba o di co talkers bedat nego eh shatod. Na ke guned ah ke jolga da World War Two ye da eh nikizad be chos i digi ka be yaxtke egi hota shzad. Bejuniho do tiet eh go ndabiltma ani dened nehiza do tiet eh go betzi be yajjoltke go. Ah gishe elna. Di di ah hota eh eh nlatan denel sa yo bahlia dat eh. Iki da ti tharor di behez ani hadalnehagi denek etche be inchilhun negi inchiliya't eh da na. Akoh xadat denebet dahtu gahku go da ah hota hasni. Da inhiniltsanla orisi sahndahtle go do ya akle go araw lebe hilta horlne do ban daht eh denek etche ndanchilnitla. Ashi hunhut nashnan ta nothlenigi. Ashi hota ba huhnetzha go odolni. Di re saabe danahadit ahis sitsele bahadaliago. Akoh hehe hota kro recommendation in la gishe ah hota be keho. Akho doni do edilni. So hehe arashnan ta nothlenigi orisi. Satatse bahna na tsi do bahnaidol kitatse. Ashi kroltse ah Ms. Chairman Maya badit esha.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker for your your questions and your comments. I think it's very important in in these work sessions. Those are the type of input that we need and so I appreciate that. There are over half, I believe, of the surface mining program that are fluent in Navajo. Most of the surface mining program is Navajo. But we will be prepared to present in the dened language. We'll have to practice because of the unique words and terms. But we'll be ready for um Navi and council. So thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman Maya kro. Ah hota be eto deneniggi ba kehunzen. Arashnan ta asasbahna adoskit. Billy, would you like to add anything?
I don't have anything to add. Forward. I think we can, you know. What Walker's talking about. We do have, we do have people that can, that we can put it together going forward. Just to present. The Navi Committee and also other delegates. Ashi me ba awda Honorable Walker. Ah ya, ah ya de. Abendahadi atala. Atasap, uh.
Akoh shila Mr. Billy. Arashnan ta nothlenigi di kro binder nehichhas negi di guna ya table of contents di original legislation. Ba ka saabe danahadit ahigishe di shatoh shee hadaliagishe eh ani denes shee dole. Akoh eh shee ah candidi doh kashnan ta nothlenigi akoh eh benachan eh hasan dole. So ashii huntsa go be inchilhushne. Araw ashii kro Mr. Skip, would you like to add a few words? Eh ay shee inalnas kro Mr. Skip. Mr. Billy is.
Akoh shila heh la sitsele Honorable Delegate Den. So beeshna anorisi go neda izuno sahigi. Aroshet shee. Boenjunu behainzi. Giza. Ye ol'i. Ani hota ro. Akho di wasetsele irazi. Ah kune da joka giza be shatoh hunet, hunetna. Eh shee ya eh ay arja etka. Co talker linle. Akone do ye yaxtke ta na bechke ro. Ala. Le. Wa yo hasan she bena do jorjilna. Ashi indeta. Washington Presidential Presidential Honor for her. Ah indeta shidet ye hatzi. So. Salit oh. Sa na'ti inde. In nahga do eh ol'i eh shatoh chos i. Nene di niara ishi ye yata shi hat oh eh ike. Ho kasi do la do be shera oko ehinde. So a Navajo couldn't break a Navajo co talker because our ceremonial words and phrases were used in the Navajo co talk in during World War Two. Araw ndashet shee. Di kwe ani. Di kwe kletjen. Be daani shigi behez ani. Heke doh gil. Ani ye hatzi. Ina'tani laje. Ms. Chairman Maya do. Was the Chairman Den. Na kinlinashid dened oh beeshbasana denoxeniggi. Anledan he ol'i. Washington. Be peso chon iho. Be ketol be sholha. Di kro ha one. Na den NHA nineteen sixty-three. Karas khati na na'ga. Next year's gonna be sixty years. Akoh eh ketol be dike. Navajo Nation has to provide audit oversight. Delegate Freely was involved with the reorganization of the NHA utilization with a federal grant. So it's not nothing new. Anleda hota be daani sh. Ani hota. Hezani anleda bolshkande. Sixty-eight. Ne enji, ne enni education behichke. Kun eh ya satiita. Kuche eh ya tijin be daani she eh ya alstin. Be shichke. Hezani bahati ya. Seven-ten. Indian section of the Samacra. Already provides direct access for any tribal entity to see primacy. Eh ya kaya atshne aida adilia. Do shidened do kenda dixito. Adaxito ya cheda hasan kwe tena nation bejtigi. Heh la akore.
Akoh shila keh uh Mr. Skip. Kro ah hota edo denedigidi do nshinana shudal. Eniggi kro Meneluk Department do. Nan ta nothlenigi slash bahnaidol kit Honorable Members of RSI. Aten ya. Oh she iltscha hun do niiljo ani iltschok kro. Ba ba honitsi do ba beketi it. Do deil nishigid oh altschok. Ye go ye da ani do bahlbera hasan. Eh she odige experts lanla behe dagoi. Benanashid eh ilniggi eh nikilndahasne do kro kati. De kui di she le hota be hilta huilne go go kadai na she dole. Arashin sitsele kro Honorable Stuart she eh di saabe danahadit ah legislation. Yo ke ro she bah hadalneh dole. Arashin nehichhatoniltsos do. Banyadil kitdo khaita she iti nishigid oh eh inhinhasaladole. Honorable Members of RSI. Akoh di she kro recommendations egi she ite dole. Ni a primacy legislation she hadalnehagi ba ilkit dole. Do na she huilne go be bejnilnit dole. Araw. Ah huntsa go she di benye kro shahneitnit dole. Do eh hehe. Araw axa hadenana slash naidol kit ndashnan ta nothlenigi. Ms. Chairman Maya, would you like to do a closing statement, please?
Thank you Chairman Den. I'd like to remind everybody that the surface mining program has been in existence since the nineteen eighties. And it was created for the sole purpose of the Navajo Nation obtaining primacy. So the, that's about forty years now. So for forty years, this program ha, it's been evolving. There's people that retire, there's people that um resign. But the technical knowledge has evolved so that now the program is an institution of its own with this knowledge that passes easily from, well, I shouldn't say easily, but it passes from, it's just within the program. They have this knowledge, they have the degrees, they have the expertise to take over the primacy function. This primacy was, the program was created under the Surface Mining Control and Reclamation Act. And it's under that act, under that law that allowed OSMRE um to delegate functions to the Navajo Nation, two tribes and two states. So that the Navajo Nation would be the very first tribe to obtain primacy. As Levina mentioned earlier in the presentation, there are other states that already have primacy um but no tribes. So I would like to remind everyone that is listening, remind the honorable delegates out there how important it is for this program to obtain primacy. Without primacy, this program is not going to exist. As I said, that's the main reason it was created. That is why the federal government for all of these years have been performing joint inspections with our Navajo Nation inspectors. It's been an ongoing training effort. And Travis had mentioned before that they are to a point now where the inspectors, the federal inspectors do not lead the tribal inspectors. They, they let them do their work. They just watch them make sure that they're doing things that they're supposed to be doing. They stand on the side. But they still, the federal government still has a regulatory responsibility that the tribal inspectors do not have. With primacy, the Navajo Nation inspectors and the rest of the pro, programs employees will do the functions that they currently do now and the functions that the federal government currently does. So it'll be a well-rounded program of overseeing um the Navajo Nation's reclamation activities on the coal mines. You have, all of the employees are, have a lot of expertise. Some ex, some of their expertise is in specialized fields. Um some of their expertise, they've been cross-trained so they, they have a multitude of knowledge under their belt. So with that, um I would like for you to remember that. I would like for you to share with your colleagues this information because as we go forward and present to LOC and then to Navi and then finally to the Navajo Nation Council, we're going to need everyone's support. Thank you.
Heh, Ms. Chairman Maya kro bahainzi do. Ka ba ilkit di da. Aram Ms. Chairman Maya Johna kro di da. We're gonna be the first nation to have primacy. Eh she nfar shen kon hadal, nhadail nishishin benachan ye da ani hikige go bahlbera hasan eh she benina. Hota eh oholni bahnilge ro ay zbenanashid eh ilni dole. So heh sitsele koh di da. Be ahati ah be. Nahadilnehagi heh. Araw huntsa go she nabikiyasiltke ro shenan ta. Ashi kroltse hun do niil huikin. Go ahead and adjourn.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is Mariana Khan.
Khan, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity to ask this question. I was wanting, I had the request to draft the legislation and I had requested of the Minerals Department to um present the, the packet of information to the Department of Justice for their review. Department of Justice's review before I began to draft the legislation. Um I have not received that um review by the Department of Justice at this moment. I have been waiting for that unless of course I have um not um, our office might have received it, but I'm not, it's not on my desk yet. I just need clarification on that if that is coming. And um that's what is preventing me from completing the draft of the legislation, Mr. Chair. And um Member Stuart, thank you.
Akoh shila keh Ms. Khan kro bahnaidon kitigi ani ah hota etla. One sixty-four review walgego. Denes neti anonsthati anonstin be wotjiggi eh hota gati ahido shahod. Anisiggi naltsos deni. Ilta ah gisit. Araw ndabikirabish eh de ilni doh she eh kroon chen kroon ni. So let me give some time to Ms. Chairman Maya.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. The information that um the, is with the Department of Justice right now with April Quinn. And I think you've seen the big binders. There's a mass volume of information that must be reviewed. So we would um like April to complete her review before we start the one sixty-four review process. So it hasn't started yet.
Akoh shila keh Ms. Chairman Maya, Ms. Khan, anything you would like to ask?
Um just um I am, I recall this in, um this um request for primacy coming up. I believe it's two times to previous Navajo Nation Councils. If um perhaps Ms. Chairman Maya could explain what the difficulty was on those two times so that um the committee has a fuller knowledge of the fact that this has been presented to the council at least two times, I believe it's two times, um Mr. Chair. And that my information might be useful in preparation for um presentation um to the greater, to the fuller body of the Navajo Nation Council. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Akoh shila keh hota bahainzi gina kidu khataan she ah ani do ratse. Uh di kwa saabe danahadit ah eh twenty eighteen ba kage do khataan she hota she bethatoniltsos. Nda doh ilabana eh araw na swatsa. Araw Mr. Skip, a response?
That eh kwenaido kitigi. January two thousand eighteen. Beeshbasana yaandas ni do biyanisos. Akoh two-thirds. Denachan. Do utanilge eh behzani bena adle. Eh araw tza ra. Ala. Amne dojoo. Nadeki. Beeshbasana she shlabbeshna keta ndale. Akoh. Araw nda eh nakke. Ah bejdo. Yi osaline. Araw. December thirty-first. Thousand eighteen biyanani sos beeshbasana. Ita beeshbasana asalte. The twenty-third council. Eh araw biyanani sos. Araw bekyao tjeto. Ande. Another, Mr. Daniels. Oni yes, they up to the podium. Di kwe do ani. Ani denahi kara no. So there was a lack of a quorum. On December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. If there was a quorum, I think the legislation was gonna be successful. Itashi bela tiso onde. Araw the twenty-first council. Sixteen new members. Araw. Hezani oh you ke nohta. Araw di de kosinsham na de ahta be wotjiggi. Bahonesta. Everything became delayed. Virtual, no public meeting. Akoh bala khaolgi iskarinda. Anaho ya. So that's the chronology and the reason that the legislation thousand eighteen was the issue of sovereignty. Limited waiver sovereignty. To eh the limited waiver of sovereignty. Eh shatoh. Bela dole. Eh piso. As sound at eh ya. Eh ya. Gikinet so bala ashlay. Le ashlatin ke abakha hosoi in the fifteen United States. Eh bah hoti jado nen inlilande. Hatiship hezani do. Eh she yindazishi na slospe la azio. Hatishi ye hatosipit ahige eh bah hoti. So it's open to any public citizen. It's the waiver of sovereignty in the Navajo Nation primacy. Nothing else will weaken Navajo Nation sovereignty. And yes, as a Navajo Nation, we are cosmic, we protect our sovereignty. It's not gonna affect the governing and law-abiding citizens within the Navajo Nation government. So in essence, that's an overall key points on this process. And like Ms. Chairman Maya mentioned, this legislation or the opportunities been in the works for nineteen eighties. And we would like to be able to uh follow through because the government and the primacy Samacra, while the overall United States primacy or Samacra, excuse me, of nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-seven was introduced. Prior to that, it failed. Congress did not approve until President Carter signed it. So this is the public issue in the Appalachians with the asset mining drainage with no regulation. That is the cornerstone of Samacra to allow citizens suits. Therefore, any Navajo Nation tribal entity seeking primacy, even the United States, individual states like New Mexico, Colorado, Utah, Montana, have that provision in their regulations of primacy to allow citizens suit. So there has been cases related to suits applied to challenge the issues of a five-year mining permit. Navajo Mine was an issue up in the northwest New Mexico. And Entec became the owner of Navajo Mine. Ninth Circuit Court in Phoenix ruled in favor of Entec. And the law worked and the public took issue. The permit renewed. So that's what the waiver of sovereignty is. Mainly to allow any public entity file a lawsuit. This will be entertained through the Navajo Nation court system. But right now, the way it's written, yes, it has referral to the Federal US District Court. And I, it was a Western delegate Walter Phelps that may introduce, had introduced a Navi resolution in two thousand sixteen. That resolution was approved. And the resolution was to amend the Surface Mining Act of seven-ten, section seven-ten to replace the wording of U- US Federal District Court with Indian tribal courts. So that's been approved as one of the initial step in the Navajo Nation primacy. So that's one area that our leadership and administration needs to pursue to have one of our Congress delegate to sponsor a change to the wording of Federal District Court to Indian tribal judicial system within section seven-ten of the Samacra Act. And that is in a nutshell, thank you very much Chairman Den.
Akoh shila, Mr. Skip kro. Eh. Bahaseniggo be inchilhanan ji na kidu eh ya beeshbasan anbetatoniltsos. Na din indeta. Jepitsa otta guna ika ha da eh ya. Two-thirds vote. Hashtantsa otta araw baholgiisda. Araw hunel beeshbasan ani la snita. Araw tlako ayu oh anltsalhalengo. Bahnaido kitindleniggi eh limited waiver of sovereign immunity walgehigi. Ayja xadala eh ya kunest akoh ada hui nte ya hado tihantneniggi she eh tewa be hadet. Enda da eh da bahnaido kiro she eh January da hotza. Araw eh xahagi negay December beyegu guna eh beeshbasan anbetaton nanaltsos nda. Ba osaline quorum egi eh she bena araw na swatsa. Akoh eh hota eh shenan ta nothlenigi. Aram Ms. Khan, did you have any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any further questions. I just, I will just await the review um from the Department of Justice. Thank you.
Akoh shila keh shenan ta nothlenigi. Aden. RSI. Di dek at kro be de kui di she behlasit. Linki she naltsos. Ntschakgo nehichanhulya nehichhatosa ah binder. Eh she nhabig bahonetzan guna deidol tchato bita doh ilni eh benachan inchilh hasan dole. Di beni yehat eniggi oholni bahnilge kweje. Navajo Nation Surface Mining Program be di neneniggi. Oh hota eh yeil nishgon na skodole. Oh hota anhar shen ay she ya da ani hikigi benina eh hota she behezani bahadi ilneto. Arash sitsele she kro bahadilneto le. Naltsos iik al ayja gati ahitshopdi nejja. Department of Justice, Ms. Quinn she ayja. Ilni ilroyol tchatoyo khaita she na'tani. Hanltsa go she naltsos khaita leto na svolneto le. One sixty-four process beyegu guna. Arashin bekeren ke gati ah she saabe danahadit ahih khaita leto nehichhatoniltsos she dole. Alke beeshbasan anbetanatjako she. Bethatoniltsos do nabikiyat kitashi khaita hanltsa go she. Yansek esho she eh la slayto le. So di hota eh shenan ta. Slash bahnaidol kit shenan ta. Aten ya akoh shila ashiltscha hun do niil lagona bekyasiltke do be inchilhazne. Karena's not on a watcha. Ten fifty-six goolkit. So we will go ahead and adjourn at this time. We will in our work session. Do heh ah nothlarenda so gizigido kui Ms. Chairman Maya or staff. Thank you very much and we certainly appreciate the work that you do at Minerals Department and the surface mining program. Eh heh hota anshin dahasofne. Do ashii huntsa dole. We're officially adjourned at this time. Akoh na be safe out there and may God bless each and every one of you. Again, get the hello dole. Ah nothka akoh na.